It's four o'clock and I will call the January 25th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order. First, I'd like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
You're muted, Mike.
I sent a request to unmute Debbie. There we go.
Now you're good. Yes. Thank you very much Cheryl. With that, we will proceed to roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. With that, I don't know when we do the tutorials for participating in a Zoom meeting in the Zoom format that we're now using for Salina City Commission meetings. We can do that now or we can wait till after the awards and proclamations. I think we usually do it at the beginning of the meeting. Is that correct?
I believe so, and I do have it pulled up to go through.
Okay, great. I will turn it over to Mistress Call.
Great. Hey, if you are participating in public comment today, please be aware of the different ways in which you can participate. If you are working from a PC, you'll see at the bottom of your screen, there is an icon, looks like little people, it says participate. You're gonna need to click there. And then if you are participating and need to indicate that, there's another button to the far right corner. If you are on an iPad, you'll notice those same icons are up in the upper right-hand corner. And you'll be able to see by clicking that who is participating in the meeting. You'll be able to indicate yourself by clicking on your name. And there's a raise hand button when you click on your name. You can also click the more button to get additional features. And you'll see the raise your hand button there as well. There is a chat feature, and that is located at the bottom, also near those participant icons. I will also note that we have a phone number. If you called in by phone, you need to dial star nine, and that will indicate that you want to raise your hand. I think that just about covers it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mistress Call. Do we have that phone number?
We do. That phone number is going to be 1-346-248-7799, with meeting ID number
Just rolls right off the tongue, doesn't it?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the orientation. With that, we will move to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of January 2021, as National Stalking Awareness Month in the city of Salina, Abby Hunter, victim advocate with D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, city of Salina. Hello? All right, I'll dive right in. National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation, January 2021. Whereas stalking is intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that person to feel fear and endangerment for themselves or their family. The variation in stalking behavior ranges from hang-up phone calls to more direct threats toward a victim. The likelihood of injury increases when the stalking behavior escalates over time. Whereas, under the laws of Saline County, Kansas, and all jurisdictions in the U.S., stalking is a crime. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance, and three in four women...
Is it just my... I'm sorry to interrupt. Is it just my audio, or is anybody else having trouble picking up Ms. Hunter?
We lost her.
I think we lost her. Oh. Ms. Hunter, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me? No?
You want to try turning up the audio on your device?
I think I might have, but I'm not sure.
I am having such trouble hearing. Is that a problem for anyone else?
Yeah.
Very thing.
I think so. And they are unmuted. I think it's an audio issue.
Okay. Ms. Hunter, would it be okay with you if I picked up reading the proclamation? I need to take that away, and I will come back to you after it's finished to see what activities you have planned. But I do want your message to get out there. Let's see. I think I may be repeating just a couple of things. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance, and three in four women killed by an intimate partner have been stalked by that same intimate partner. Whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that 190 protection from stalking orders were filed in Saline County in 2018. Whereas, the statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking for multiple reasons, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement, and stalking is a tactic of domestic violence and sexual abuse, so it may not be reported as the primary form of abuse and victimization, although the victim has experienced stalking along with other forms of abuse. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, communities can better combat stalking by raising awareness, adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and providing more and better victim services. And now, therefore, the City of Salina Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Stalking Awareness Month. Signed this 25th day of January 2021. So, I'm so sorry to have hijacked that, and I don't know that we can hear you yet, but do you have any virtual or in-person activities or awareness things going on? Oh. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Could it help if she disconnected and just rejoined?
Yeah, let's try that. Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, if that doesn't work, I believe Angela had raised her hand, was indicating she could give additional information.
Okay.
Yes. Hi, is everybody hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we do have different activities going on this week on Facebook Live. There'll be some stuff on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday that will be addressing these topics on Facebook Live on the D-VAC website. For the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation of January 21, whereas millions of men and women and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second-largest and fastest-growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas, human trafficking denies victims' basic human dignity and freedom, and is based on recruiting, harboring, and transporting people through the use of force, fraud, and other coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tears at our social fabric, debases our community humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas, traffickers frequently target victims and then use violence, threats, lies, false promises, debt bondage, or other forms of control and manipulation to force victims to work against their will or to keep victims involved in the commercial sexual exploitation. Whereas, in the U.S., Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking, and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, received protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Central Kansas and the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we can commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us, united, we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and the rights of every person. Now, therefore, the City of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims January 2021 the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and applauds the efforts as many victim providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in opposing human trafficking in all of its forms.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you.
That's such disappointing, I guess it's an understatement, data that Kansas is an originating state for human trafficking because, you know, my biases think that, you know, Kansas is in the middle of the country and it can't happen here, but I guess you show that it can happen anywhere.
Yes. Especially with the highway interchanges, Jack I-70 and I-35.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And so if folks go to the D-VAC Facebook page, you will have Facebook Live events on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
For both National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and stalking awareness as well.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Proclamation for you.
Mayor Hodges, if I could double back just a little bit, the guidance that we've received about public comment is that we should also advise how we conduct executive session. And so we skipped over that as we talked about how to participate in Citizens' Forum, and I'd like to touch base there if I may.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I think it's pretty straightforward. As we go into an executive session, the meeting host is able to create a side room that the selected individuals that are participating in the executive session are able to log into that. Everyone else that's on the Zoom call just can stay put. The call will stay active. When the executive session is concluded, those that participated in the executive session will return to that main meeting and will pick up where we left off. So, much like we would physically leave the room and allow people to stay in the main room, in a Zoom atmosphere, we will leave the main Zoom meeting room, convene a smaller group in a side room, and then return to the main meeting. The participants, the public participants, don't have to log off, log back on. They just need to sit tight while the executive session is occurring elsewhere.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much. Mr. Sprague, I appreciate that clarification. And I've been forgetting to identify myself the entire meeting. With that, we will move on to Citizens' Forum. Citizens' Forum is an opportunity for the public to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments or questions to five minutes, and I'll look to staff to see if we have any members of the public that are raising their... I'm not even sure I'm seeing any members of the public at all, am I?
Oh, there's one.
If you would like to speak, raise your virtual hand, and staff will get you unmuted.
Yes, I see one there. Phone number 201-2966.
Okay.
Looks like they're unmuted now.
Yeah, this is Drew Sprague, of Salina, Kansas, 1301.
I'm so sorry. You cut out there. If you could give us your name and where you're from?
Drew Sprague.
Okay, thank you.
Here in Salina, 1301 East Minneapolis. And I would just like the commission to look at reopening the fieldhouse if possible. I know the COVID numbers are, I guess I haven't seen recently, but I think they're kind of staying at that level. I don't know if there's a dramatic increase from when we initially, like last week, maybe two weeks ago, you guys had brought it up to that the numbers were increasing. But since then, I think they've kind of stayed the same at that number. I would just urge you guys to relook into it, because cities like Wichita and bigger cities are having events at their fieldhouses, and they seem to be doing just fine. So, I would appreciate if you guys would look into that for our youth community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sprague. I think that Mr. Sprague has discussed that somewhat. He's done some research in light of our mass gathering limits and otherwise. I don't know if there's anything that you would like to share at this point, Mr. Sprague?
Sure. Mike Sprague here. I can give a little bit of kind of some recent history, the community conversation that occurred last week. And so, you know, going back a little bit further, you as the governing body indicated that they made the decision to close the fieldhouse and indicated your willingness to reconsider opening the fieldhouse when numbers improved. And that conversation focused on active cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. And then last week, there was some discussion at the county commissioner level with the health director indicating initially possibly an intention to let the mass gathering health order expire, which would have expired midnight on Saturday night, I believe, this past weekend. And then ultimately, he reached out to me and indicated that, I guess, had consulted others, reconsidered that health order, and was intending to extend it for 28 days, which is two 14-day COVID cycles. And so, it would extend from the 25th out another 28 days. So, some of the conversation we were having at the staff level is, your prior direction was to bring the question of fieldhouse opening back to you when the numbers looked like they had changed or improved, and that the initial intent to let the mass gathering expire might have been an indication of some positive indicators. That isn't necessarily the case. If you look at kind of active cases, they may have peaked and come off that peak just slightly, but the health director's point in his press release was, it's really kind of too soon to tell whether that was just a fluctuation, or whether we were starting into a positive trend when we essentially have just recently hit our all-time high. Mayor Hodges and I had a conversation, and she indicated that going forward, she might, she would like me to be prepared to provide on a weekly basis an update. She didn't indicate an expectation that I would do that today, but I was able to speak with the health director, and he was able to forward over some numbers. So, I have today's numbers. I don't necessarily have a basis of comparison to possibly a week prior. But what he reported is there's 5,400 active cases in Saline County, or have been. 3,435 of those had recovered. So, I don't know that the math works out exactly right, but he reports 1,877 active cases. There've been 88 deaths, and 78 new cases, and 21 hospitalized. And so, you know, as we go forward, what I'll try to do is be able to provide you a comparison possibly to the week prior, as well as be able to speak to hospital capacity compared to those that are hospitalized. But ultimately, you as a governing body have provided prior direction. If you want this item placed back on your agenda, if you want staff to provide additional information, we'd be happy to do either. Or both.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much, Mr. Sprague. My thought was, in adding this to our Order of Business, as a regular item in our Order of Business going forward, we lose a lot of viewership as we get deeper and deeper into the meeting, and it goes on and on. And I think we'd all acknowledge that the pandemic is probably the single biggest driver that's motivating a lot of our policy decisions. And just an update from week to week, I think, helps frame that and keep that in front of us. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. That was exactly what I had in mind. Is there anyone else on the phone for Citizens' Forum?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any more hands raised.
Thank you very much, Mistress Call. With that, we don't have any public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so that will bring us to item number six, the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of the January 11, 2021 meeting. Item 6.2, 2019 water main replacement projects, numbers one and two. Item 6.2A, award the contract for the 2019 water main replacement project, number one. Project number 90039, KPWSLF project number 297997, to Stevens Contractors, Inc. of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $1,871,700, authorized with a 5% construction contingency of $1,965,285. Item 6.2B, award the contract for the 2019 water main replacement project, number two. Project number 90039, KPWSLF project number 2997, to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $1,998,324, authorized with a 5% construction contingency of $2,098,240.
Mayor Hodges, is there any item that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, I don't see any. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Commissioner Hoppick here. I move that we approve consent agenda, item 6.1, 6.2, 6.2A, and 6.2B.
Commissioner Davis.
Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, which will take us into administration. I don't know if we did the renumbering. Do we just go to item 7.2, or do the various numbers move themselves up in the hierarchy?
Given the timing of the change, we left the numbering the same and noted the removal of item 7.1, but it probably would be good just for the general public and for the record to note that item 7.1 has been removed from today's agenda, so we'll progress to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, consider resolution 21-7927, correcting resolution number 20-7910, adopted on December 21, 2020, establishing water and wastewater rates effective February 1, 2021, in the comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina.
Ms. Pack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. The City Commission adopted resolution 20-7910 in December of 2020. And in that presentation, the staff report recommended that all rates for the water and wastewater utilities be increased by 2%. As we were going to publish the comprehensive fee schedule in January, staff recognized that the recommended numbers on the staff report did not match up to what the attached resolution reflected. So, today's action request would be to replace the original resolution with a resolution that accurately reflects the discussed recommended rates at that time. The effective date would remain February 1, 2021. We've discussed that with Water Customer Accounting Staff, and the way they would do that is they would prorate the old rate to any billing dates through January 31, and the new rates would begin on February 1, 2021. Action items for commission today is to adopt resolution 21-7927, correcting resolution number 207910, and amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide water and wastewater rates effective February 1, should be 2021. Approve the resolution with amendments as you might deem appropriate. Postpone the consideration of the resolution and give staff information as far as what information you would like to see us bring back. Or do not approve the resolution, and the rates would remain the same as they were published in resolution 20-7910. Staff recommends option number one.
Mayor Hodges, thank you. Ms. Pack, are there any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right. In that case, I'd accept a motion on this item?
Commissioner Davis, move to adopt resolution 21-7927, correcting resolution 20-7910, and amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide for water and wastewater rates effective February 1, 2020. And that should be 21, I guess, it said 20.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7927. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Commissioner Hoppick here. Just because I've sat in your seat last week, we might want to do that on roll call, remember? It makes a little... Hey, I know. I told you it takes a few weeks to get it up here.
Oh, man. Well, I tell you what. Let's, I tell you what, let's do a roll call on that. Sorry, I should have been doing that all along. Thank you so much for the reminder.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor, I just want to let you know that I did not have any hands raised, just so that's confirming for anybody watching.
Sorry, I'm getting into it. Do we want to go back and then take the roll call, Ms. Mermas?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And the motion passes again, 5-0, and that will take us to item 7.3.
Item 7.3, Board Appointments Resolution. Item 7.3A, Resolutions Number 217929, Appointing Members to the Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board, Arts and Humanities Commission, Building Advisory Board, Business Improvement District Design Review Board, Disciplinary Advisory Board, Heritage Commission, Salina Community Economic Development Organization, and Saline County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
All right. Are there, Mayor Hodges, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Do we have any questions or comments from the public? And I'll try to allow more time this time.
No, we do not.
Thank you, Mistress Call. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis, I'm over approval of resolution twenty-one dash seven nine two nine, appointing members to the various citizen boards as has been mentioned.
Commissioner Hoppeck, aye, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve various appointments to boards as indicated. I'm going to go with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. And I just want to offer a heartfelt thanks to everyone who submitted their expression of interest to apply for these boards, and just to encourage you, we do have a lot more board openings, both for adult and for youth members. So, speaking, if you've got a teenager in your life that has some interests in one of these city boards, it's very interesting, and it also looks really good on a resume. So, I'd encourage you to take a look at the boards that we have openings for and submit your expression of interest, and that can be done through the City of Salina's website. Which brings us to item seven point four.
Item seven point four, mayor board appointments.
Some members of the, Mayor Hodges here, some members of the public may not know that in addition to serving on the Salina City Commission, each Commissioner also takes on the additional responsibility of serving as a liaison to other commissions and boards within the community. And the twenty twenty-one appointments are as follows. Commissioner Davis will serve on the Salina Airport Authority and the Salina Saline County Building Authority. Commissioner Franz will serve on the North Central Regional Planning Commission, the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission, and the Salina Saline County Building Authority. Commissioner Hoppeck will serve on the Convention and Tourism Committee and the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. Commissioner Ryan will serve on Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Salina Housing Authority, and I will serve on the Chamber of Commerce Board and the Library Board. So, thank you for your contributions, which a lot of people may not know about. I really appreciate your volunteering to serve, and I'm glad that we were, we got all these filled up and we've got good people assigned. Do we need to take any formal action to adopt these appointments?
Defer to the City Attorney. We hadn't talked about that. I think he needs to be unmuted, Lauren.
I am now, thank you. Mayor, those are at your discretion, so you are having announced those is all that is necessary.
Thank you very much. All right. And thanks again to my fellow members of the governing body. And that will take us into development business.
Item eight point one, consider resolution two one dash seven nine two eight of support for a low-income housing tax credit application being submitted by Sunflower Development Group to help finance development of forty-seven senior housing units in the former St. John's Hospital Building at one thirty-nine North Penn Avenue.
All right. Mr. Andrew, available and unmuted.
Believe I am. I am, I am. Ms. Driscoll and I are occupying the same room, so we'll try not to have any feedback here. This city staff was recently contacted by Mr. Jason Swords of Sunflower Development Group, and Sunflower Development Group expressed a desire to obtain a resolution of support for a twenty twenty-one application they're submitting for low-income housing tax credits to help finance their plan for converting the former St. John's Hospital Building into housing for seniors. As part of that application process, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation encourages a resolution of support from the local governing body indicating its approval and support both for the proposed housing and for the use of tax credits as a financing tool. The resolution that's attached provides that support, but also qualifies it by subjecting the final plans for the project to the city's building permit review process and other regulatory review processes. The tax credits are awarded through a competitive process, and I've outlined on page one of your report the calendar for the twenty twenty-one timeline. The most recent project in Salina that was awarded tax credits was Phase One of the Lee Building. This is a property that's also potentially eligible for the Neighborhood Revitalization Tax Credit Program, and so that is an additional local incentive that could be available to assist the developers. As far as your options this afternoon, you could approve the attached resolution of support authorizing the issuance of housing tax credits for rehabilitation of the former hospital building. You could postpone consideration of this resolution to a future meeting date if you feel additional information needs to be provided about the project before acting, or you could decline to approve the attached resolution of support for the project. In light of the Commission's previous support for the use of tax credits to help finance rehabilitation of this building, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution.
Thank you.
And Jason Swords is on the line if you have questions for the developer. I would be available for any questions that you have.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. Is there anything that Mr. Swords would like to offer at this time?
Sure. First off, thank you for your time today to the Commission and go Chiefs from here in Kansas City. So, as most of you know, we purchased this property back in two thousand and fifteen. My company, we completed eighteen historic renovations in Kansas and Missouri over the last, oh, eight to nine years. This has been a very difficult undertaking. It took us four years to, you know, get the former hospital eligible for historic tax credits. And then once we, once we were able to get it eligible, we were told by KHRC that we really needed to stand down because they had just given quite a large award to the first phase of the Lee properties. So, it pushed us back another year. So, we are very excited about the opportunity with KHRC this year. We feel like we have a strong application, and this would be our third senior affordable housing project that we will have completed. All, previous of the other, the other two previous projects we've done have also been historic. I can tell you that, you know, based upon the thirteen additions that were built onto the original nineteen fourteen structure, it still is a complicated construction project. I had spoken to a member of staff earlier, and I know where there were some concerns about the amount of demolition that we would be doing. Just so everybody knows, we would be demoing the building down to the original structure itself and getting rid of a handful of the additions from nineteen sixty-four, nineteen seventy-one, nineteen sixty-six, most of which have been, you know, infiltrated with water, mold. There's a great deal of asbestos and environmental issues there as well. So, we actually submitted our pre-application to KHRC last week, and again, we feel very good about our chances of getting a tax credit award here yet in twenty twenty-one. We've been dedicated to this project since the day we bought the property and continue to be so. So, I would be happy to answer any questions from members of the Commission or the public whatsoever.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much, Mr. Swords. Are there any questions from the Commission for either Mr. Andrew or for Mr. Swords?
I think he answered my question as to if the other buildings were going to be demolished and just leaving the, the original building, so.
Well, my understanding is the original building plus nineteen fifty-one addition.
Nineteen fifty-one, yeah.
Yeah. And I just want to make it clear that I'm understanding correctly that the rest of the property, with the exception of the Medall Center, which is, I think, currently in use, would be demolished to bare ground.
Correct. So, we would create parking in the nineteen seventy-one addition area, which is just on the other side of the original building from the, I've always said, called it the media aisle center, but I may be saying it incorrectly. And then the rest, the rest would be green space and fencing and some outdoor amenities for our would-be residents. And we would be taking the original front of the remaining historic building back to its, its original facade. So, we are, we are excited about the opportunity.
Is there anyone else who has any questions? In that case, I do have one. Do you have, Mr. Swords, do you have any sense of when the National Park Service is going to act on your application, and will that make the application for the tax credits that much stronger? Or, you know, does it hurt you having that being in a kind of a pending state even though you've gotten the Kansas approval from the site?
No, so, so this is a little bit different. It's kind of like the cart before the horse here. So, we have an approved Part One through the National Park Service, but we do not have an approved historic National Register nomination. So, we've submitted our Part Two, which will be approved by the National Park Service, but the property itself won't be eligible for the NR until we take down the older structures. So, the fact that they've approved the Part One, and they will approve the Part Two, although they may come back with a handful of changes that they will request, which, you know, we will, we will work with them on. Once you've got an approved Part One and a Part Two, and if you perform that work as directed, which we always do, then it's automatically eligible for the NR. So typically, we do an NR deal or an NR award prior to starting construction. In this case, it'll be post, because we need to take down the sixties and seventies structures in order to make it actually eligible for the register.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
This is the most complicated historic deal we've ever done in our history. I, we've gone through and looked at the original joints, you know, attaching new building and older buildings and whatnot, and figured out everything that we can save. So, we're, we've got it dialed in, but it's been very complicated.
Well, hopefully, this will be the jewel in Sunflower Development's crown, so.
It better be. We're, we're ready to go, so thank you.
Do we have any members of the public who have questions or would like to comment? If you do, please raise your virtual hand, and Ms. Driscoll can unmute you, or Mr. Woods can unmute you, and you can be heard.
Madam Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. I'll bring it back to the Commission then.
Commissioner Hoppeck here. I move that we approve the attached resolution of support, supporting the issuance of housing tax credits for the rehabilitation of the former St. John's Hospital into housing for seniors.
Commissioner Franz?
Mr. Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-one dash seven nine two eight. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Swords, for your time today, and best wishes for the project in the future. That'll take us to item eight point two.
Item eight point two, first reading ordinance number two one dash one one zero five zero to consider an amendment of the future land use map of the Salina, Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of property located on Cortland Circle, south of Schilling Road and west of South Ohio Street, from future employment to future neighborhood center and an amendment of the text of the narrative describing the neighborhood center land use category of the Salina Comprehensive Plan to add five C and PC five to the list of potential zoning districts under the neighborhood center land use category.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. South Ohio LLC owns the property that's at the southwest corner of South Ohio and Schilling Road, and they platted annexed and zoned that property in two thousand and three, and has a mixture of zoning classifications. And as the Commission is aware, two of the lots out in that subdivision are developed, one with Kennedy and Co. Office, one with the Sunflower Bank headquarters. The rest of the lots are undeveloped, and South Ohio Land has been looking at their vision for the property, and their vision has changed from what they envisioned in two thousand and three. And in discussing that vision with representatives of South Ohio Land, it appears that their vision was closer to what the Comprehensive Plan envisions as a neighborhood center. And so, they have filed an application to incorporate fourteen lots in Liberty Edition Number Two into the existing neighborhood center that centers around the intersection of Schilling and Ohio. And so, they have a companion application to rezone nine lots in that area from Plan C six to Plan C five. However, neither of those zoning classifications are identified as potential zoning districts under the neighborhood center land use narrative. So, this is a two-part request. In addition to requesting to change the map, they are requesting to amend the future land use narrative in the neighborhood center to add Plan C five as a potential zoning district. The map amendment is limited just to this property. The text amendment, if approved, would apply to the city's other seven neighborhood centers. This application went before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on January fifth, and the Planning Commission recommended that the map change be approved and that the list of potential zoning districts in neighborhood center be amended to include Plan C five. And so, this comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you concur with their findings and recommendations, the attached ordinance twenty-one eleven oh five oh, amending the future land use designation and adding Plan C five to the list of potential districts should be approved on first reading. You could refer this application back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, providing them reasons for any disagreement you have with their recommendation, or you could overturn their recommendation and decide that the future land use designation of this property should remain unchanged, and you would make a motion that the ordinance not be approved. That action would require four affirmative votes. While the action of denying the change in the boundary would not absolutely preclude them from doing a mixed-use commercial residential development, it would indicate a lack of support for their companion application to change the zoning classification on the nine lots to Plan C five. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. Mr. James Hall is here representing South Ohio Land, and he could better articulate their vision for the property, but I'll be open to any questions you have about the Comprehensive Plan.
Commissioner Davis? Mr. Andrew, if this request did not come forward, was there any other impetus to add PC five to the neighborhood center zoning inclusion?
Are you asking whether this would apply to other neighborhood centers?
Well, I mean, that's what, I mean, that's the subsequent effect of this. I'm just wondering whether was the option of addressing just this one parcel plan zoning considered as opposed to changing that designation for all other pieces of property that might come under that designation in the future?
Well, the, the zoning of the lots in question, the companion item, could, that zoning change could be approved. It's just, this is just an effort to try to make the zoning. It's just, this is just an effort to try to make the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan line up. We have a lot of property within our existing mapped neighborhood centers that zone PC5, including all four corners of the Schilling, Ohio intersection, but it's not recognized in the plan as a potential zoning district. So the amendment would just make the plan and the, and the text line up with each other.
Are, are there other, I almost necessarily say intersections, but other areas in which it would not be a good idea to, to make the change?
Well, well, the advantage of Plan C5 is twofold. For one, in a planned commercial district, no development can be approved without the site plan or site development plan being approved either by the Planning Commission or the City Commission itself. The other reason and why the Planning Commission limited their recommendation to Plan C5 only is that with Plan C5, you can go in and modify the list of approved uses or customize the district. So if you had a Plan C5 that was near a residential area or sensitive area, the commission would have the discretion to go in and delete uses that they think might be incompatible with the neighboring uses.
Right. So, so this project notwithstanding, if, if we had an undertaking, which I think we actually do, to have the land, future land use and, and the zoning line up with each other, this would be a change that you'd anticipate would should be recommended anyway?
It's something that staff has been working on over the past few years. To be honest, the consultants who prepared the Comprehensive Plan, it was not a high priority for them to make the land use classifications line up with our current zoning classifications because they believed that our zoning classifications were going to change, that we would have a brand-new zoning ordinance and brand-new districts, and that has not happened. So we're still in the process of making the plan and our existing zoning districts line up with each other. So if this request was approved, someone could look at the neighborhood center at Markley and Magnolia, which is currently all vacant, and let's say they wanted to put a convenience store on one of those corners, they could apply for that. It doesn't mean it has to be approved, but if this amendment were approved, then an applicant who had property in a neighborhood consent, center could apply for PC5 zoning in the future. It doesn't mean it would be approved or it had to be approved. It would just provide that as an additional option.
Right. That, that reasoning, right, it sounds great. So I mean, it, it's something that good and should have been done irrespective of this project's request.
Yes, it, it's something that staff has worked on, not just in neighborhood centers, but there, there was an amendment and the Planning Commission had previously approved this same change in 2017. Just on final action, the Plan C5 did not get included at that time.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor Hodges, is there, are there any other questions for either Mr. Andrew or Mr. Hall?
Commissioner Fran's here. I would, I would say that Mr. Andrew's response to Commissioner Davis's question answered my question, and that was, it appeared from the narrative that PC5 was not incorporated as a component of neighborhood center, and I was a little bit confused about, you know, how that came to be, but he, he answered that. Apparently, we are going to make this more consistent with this action.
Mayor Hodges, any, any other commissioners have questions?
None here.
If, if not, we'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments. If you would like to make a comment or if you have a question, please raise your virtual hand or send the organizer a message indicating that you'd like to speak and we'll get you unmuted.
Madam Mayor, Jamie Hall has his hand raised.
Mr. Hall.
Commissioners, thank you very much for considering this. Talking with Dean as we've gone through this and the rest of the staff members, this seemed to be the way that we untangled the mess and got everything lined back up so that it was all going to be consistent as things go forward, whether it's on this site or another site in the community. So we would greatly appreciate your support going forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Madam Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Hoppe here. I move we approve ordinance number 21-11050, amending the future land use designation of these nine lots on Cortland Circle from employment to a neighborhood center and adding PC5 to the list of potential zoning districts in neighborhood center on first reading.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11050 on first reading. Could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppe.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes five zero. Which brings us to the companion item 8.3.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 21-11051 to consider an application Z20-5 filed by James Hall on behalf of South Ohio Land LLC requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from PC6 to PC5. The property that is the subject of this rezoning request is legally described as lots one through five, block four, and lots one through four, block five, in the corrected plat of Liberty Edition Number Two, in addition to the Salina, City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Mayor Hodges, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Oh, wait, I'm so sorry, Mr. Andrew, I just skipped right, skipped right over you, turning it back to you.
Yeah, thank you, mad, commissioners. This is a companion item to the item that you just heard, and this is for a, a smaller number of lots. You do have in your packets basically a colorized zoning map and back in 2003, and working with South Ohio Land and trying to anticipate uses and a step down of uses from Schilling Road to the industrial to the south, we came up with Plan C6 as the appropriate designation for this tier of lots on Cortland Circle. And the reason for that was that Plan C6 was the first commercial district that allowed for warehouse-type uses, and we chose Plan C6 because C6, unlike some of our industrial zones, requires pay parking and requires front yard landscaping and things like that. So we wanted to maintain the commercial development standards, but still for, allow for warehouse-type uses. And it appears that we were wrong because there was seemingly a lack of market or interest in those types of uses on these lots. And South Ohio Land now envisions a different style of development, more of a mixed-use development pattern with potentially some form of residential housing along with smaller-scale neighborhood scale commercial uses. And because of their desire to create a mixed-use development incorporating some form of housing, they are requesting that these nine lots be rezoned from PC6 to PC5. So if this request is approved, all of the commercial lots in the Liberty Edition Number Two would be zone PC5, and this could actually be reviewed as a downzoning, a more restrictive zoning from PC6 to PC5. And this also went before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on January the 5th. The Planning Commission recommended that the zoning change on these lots be approved for PC5 zoning, and if you concur with that, the attached ordinance 2111051, rezoning these lots to Plan C5 should be approved on first reading. You could postpone consideration of this request if you have a disagreement with the recommendation of the Planning Commission or to allow additional information to be provided by the applicant, or you could vote to deny the attached ordinance and decline to approve the zoning change. So with that, I'd be open to any questions. The Comprehensive Plan, part of this is a little more complicated. This is pretty straightforward. It would basically make all the lots in Liberty Edition the same zoning designation.
Mayor Hodges, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there any questions from the commissioners or Mr. Andrew or from Mr. Hall about the zoning change?
Commissioner Fran's here, and I'm, I'm going to divert from the specific question, but I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm looking at the last action we took, and the motion was to change the future land use designation from employment to neighborhood center. But if you look at the map attached, it appears that what's happening is changing them from office to a neighborhood center. It seems to be a point of discrepancy, and I, which is it?
Your, your question is whether we're changing it from employment center to neighborhood center?
Yes, because the, that map showed that the area that I think we're talking about is, is being office currently.
With, within the employment land use area, there's a, a subcategory that's office only because the employment area is a really broad, includes industrial uses, and it was given an office designation because it's not zoned for industrial use.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just saw that and I thought, whoa, that's, that's.
That, that would be my fault because I didn't, I didn't instruct the GIS technician to include the word employment on there, but it, it is, it's an employment area with limited to office uses, which indicates it's not industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Hodges, so we are, we are good on the action that we just took. I'm hearing, is there, are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Oh, Mr., not a commissioner, but Mr. Scrag. Not your hand raised.
Commissioner, but Mike Scrag here. I think it might be helpful for Mr. Andrew just to touch on the deferred site plan approval aspect of, of this planned district.
Yeah, one of the things that occurred here is that the, when this was all done, South Ohio Land agreed to make this entire subdivision a planned district, which subjected every lot in the subdivision to a site plan review, but at this time, there's no specific development plan for any particular lot. So one of the options in a planned commercial district is to request the zoning and then each of the site plans for the individual lots or combination of lots would come back for a site plan review as projects are proposed. And to date, the only site plan that's been approved is for the Sunflower Bank headquarters. And the other thing I failed to note was that, the other thing that's unique about this subdivision, it has three different cost recovery fees to the city that are collected to help pay back the cost of infrastructure. So there's, there's one that helps reimburse the cost of Schilling Road, reimburses the cost of a water line, and reimburses the cost of the Schilling Road ditch, which serves as stormwater detention. So as each lot develops, South Ohio Land will be paying a impact fee, actually three impact fees as each lot develops.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, Ms. Driscoll, I'll turn to you to see if there's any, if there are any members of the public that would like to comment or have questions on this item.
Sorry, it's a bit of a leapfrog, Mrs., Madam Mayor, because Dean and I are in the same room. We're having to mute so we don't have feedback. So I do not have anybody raising their hand, but I do believe I heard Jamie Hall.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please go ahead.
Thank you. When we started this project, what seems like a short time ago, but it's actually been a long time ago, we sat down with the city staff and with Greg Binkston and a whole group of people and did our best to come up with what we thought was going to be the use for this land going forward. At that time, the location to the north of us and to the east of us had not been envisioned yet. As time has gone on and the neighborhood has found its own way to develop, we look at ourselves and say that we, maybe we were there first, but the practice that has happened after that has proven that we were not exactly right on all these lots. So at this time, that's why we're coming back to do this, to change this, to be more in line with what the entire area is developing into. And by taking this downzoning action, we feel that we're doing that. We do have shovel-ready lots with streets that we have put up and paid for that have sewer and water in them, and we would just like everyone to help us see this through so we can, so we can get some more work going out there. Appreciate your input.
Mayor Hodges, thank you, Mr. Hall. Do you have a, a proposed groundbreaking date? Not that you're made for this action, but, because I'm nosy?
We have, we have no projects planned. We just think that we've had enough people come and knock on our door, and the lots they point at, we have to say, well, we can't do that there. So that's why we're taking this action, to get it more in line with what needs to be there today.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for any other questions or comments or action.
I move, we concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve ordinance number 21-11051, rezoning this property from PC6 to PC5 on first reading.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, ordinance number 21-0051. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppe.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Looking passes, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you for having me there.
Which brings us to other business. Do any commissioners have some other business to discuss? I see Commissioner Davis has his hand up.
Mine's fast. Seeing the citizens approved for the advisory boards reminded me that we still need to move on our formal education process for all of our citizens' boards. Just, I'm not asking for anything date-specific, but just, just a reminder.
Agreed.
Mayor Hodges, I, I, I agree too. I mean, we've, we've had some prolonged discussions about the necessity for our our ethics training with various board members to get oriented for that. So I am looking forward to that. But is, is there anything, is there anything from any of the other commissioners?
Commissioner Ryan here. Mr. Trag, you had an article discussing some possible proposed legislation in the Kansas Senate, I believe, that's further, going to further cap our ability to control our finances, revision of last year's tax cap. Could you speak to that? And, and if that in fact is the case going forward, I think that as a commission, we should respond to our legislators and tell them our feelings about that type of regulation.
Sure, Mike Scrag here, I'll do my best to summarize it as I understand it. The, and I would tell you that the League of Kansas Municipalities has taken a neutral position on the legislation. So the way it's being described is removing the cap on the property tax or removing the property tax lid, but imposing a burden on, or not responsibility, I should say, on a taxing entity. If they were going to set their mill rate such that that would generate additional revenue for them, then there's a notice requirement, and my understanding is that it's mailed notice to every property owner property address within the taxing district. So above and beyond, you know, a typical published notice in the newspaper, it's mailed notice. So on the one hand, there's added responsibility or added, you know, process, but it removes the tax lid such that if you as the governing body choose to, you know, set a, set a mill rate that generates additional revenue compared to the year prior, you have the authority to do it, you just have that responsibility to provide notice and go through that hearing process. So like I said, the league has taken a neutral position on it. And they spoke, took a position against a property tax lid originally. And they kind of see this as, I don't want to say a compromise necessarily, but offsetting additional process in, in response to that ability to raise that rate.
Do rising property tax values for the, suppose there's some community value that's computed? Then do we have to lower the, the mill levy in accordance to match that? And how does that go with properties that we have given tax, property tax forgiveness to?
Yeah, I don't know that I can, well, yes, the expectation is that we would remain revenue neutral from year to year. And if so, if there was property value increases, we would make a corresponding adjustment unless we went through that process to, you know, meet the requirements to have the public notice and public hearing process to either take advantage of that, that assessed value or gain. Or if you just chose that, you know, we needed additional revenue for a particular purpose, you go through that process as well. With respect to tax increment properties, I don't know that I've looked at it in that great a detail. But we continue to capture the increment and I guess it could alter the increment generation and could alter the, the performance of the district.
Well, considering the uniqueness of each community, I, I find that leveling argument not to make a lot of sense.
I understand that, you know, that's the position the league took quite some time ago is local control, local authority, that the decisions are best made at the local level. And that didn't seem to carry the day when they passed that legislation somewhat ironically. And that is the approach they're now taking to COVID decisions is that they should be at the local level, not the state level. But I don't want to divert too far into alternate politics, political topic here.
Thank you.
So I, I think it's workable. I mean, you as a governing body, your hands are not completely tied, but it would create an added level of public notice and process.
Mayor Hodges, I guess following up on, on Commissioner Ryan's question then. So like in terms of process or in terms of timeline, what does that do? I mean, so how far out are we going to need to begin, say, the budgeting process? Does this, does it affect all of our other timelines if we're trying to build in a mailing notice and a hearing notice?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know that it changes the, the adoption date for the budget. But as that legislation gets adopted, we'd have to look at those advanced notices and it may cause us to start to have our budget conversations sooner.
Yeah, that, yeah.
But if it, if it goes through this legislative cycle, then it would be effective for 2022. So we'd have to factor it in at that point.
Anyone else with anything under other business? I do have one thing that I wanted to ask fellow members of the governing body. And that's in regard to, we've talked in the past about the citizen review board that we're going to be establishing. And I wanted to see if any of the commissioners had any further thoughts on, on the selection process for the citizens review board.
Commissioner Davis, it would be a daunting task to review ninety two expressions of interest, but I don't know whether it'd be fair to any of those ninety two people if we all five didn't review, at least see each one. You know, my suggestion would be that we review them and bring to the table ten or however many seats are open suggestions. And apparently we have to vet this in, in public. And at least we'd each only be vetting ten people instead of ninety two.
All right. Any, any, anyone else? Because I, I think I had something that was working along the same, same path as what you've suggested.
If I understand, Commissioner Franz here, if I understand that suggestion is that we would each look at all of the applications and select five or ten or whatever, our five or ten prefers. And then we put that in a matrix and figure out who gets the most votes and consider those in order as far as an appointment goes.
Commissioner David, right, we, I mean, you never know, there may be eighty, ninety percent overlap of our choice, which would make it very easy.
You know, I, I get that. I think that's as good approach as any. And if it works out, there's eighty percent overlap, I would feel extremely fortunate. You know, what concerns me is that we all pick ten entirely different people. I don't know that that's necessarily the case, but you know, it, it does, it would still limit the universe of consideration.
Well, we can do it like they do for a pope, we go on a run and when we get our selection, whether it's white smoke or black smoke up the chimney.
Commissioner Hoppeck here, and I believe that would need to be ten and a separate from the individual that would be representing the Salina Police Department and also the Human Relations Commission, correct?
Correct.
Unless there's more than one police officer who.
But I, but then I think you need to pick one of those. So I think if you, if there's more from the human relations, you'd pick one and then it'd be ten separate ones from the public is the way I would.
I, I have a question that, does the human relations select their own rep or do we select? I thought they selected their own.
I think they select their own, don't they? I don't know.
That was my understanding.
Greg, you're muted. Can someone unmute Greg? There we go.
My recollection is that we, that you chose to go with the same model as the designees from the, to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Heritage Commission from the Planning Commission. And that was that the, those are mayoral appointments.
But would we then, would the mayor then anticipate that the chair of the Human Relations Commission recommend a name? Because you have to have a person who's going to be there that year, who wants to be there, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and I think that that's something, I'm sorry, Mayor Hodges, something that we need to nail down. I had assumed that that was something that the Human Relations Commission would decide on internally, taking those things into consideration in terms of, you know, time available, commitment level, you know, where they're at and they're serving their term. And then pretty much make a, you know, a pro forma recommendation to the city and we would accept the Human Relations Commission's recommendation. That's how I had been looking at it, but I'll defer to counsel as to whether or not that's the way it would work.
I'll be happy to. I, thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to confirm my recollection that it was to be a mayoral appointment from the membership of Human Relations Commission. I hope I'm not mistaken in that. But I, I can check that here as, if you continue the discussion.
Sure.
I would just add, both Dean Andrew and I are still here in the same room. And working with planning commission and BZA where we have these situations, I will tell you that the board does discuss the appointment. And as a body makes that recommendation through a resolution that then comes to the city commission for that final decision.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Rascal. Any, anybody else that would like to weigh in and have some suggestions on the process itself?
Yeah, I, the ten names, I guess is okay. I, I kind of in my mind had more like fifteen or something that might give us a little more chance for overlap. But I don't know if there's a magical number there.
Right.
Commissioner Davis, fifteen would be fine. The, the only thing I would request, if possible, and I'll leave up the other four, that might be something from which we'd want to get the information ten days before we're going to discuss it instead of three.
Abs, absolutely. Mr. Scrag, I know that staff was trying to collate that in to some sort of a spreadsheet. But I suppose failing that, we can, you know, go through the applications individually. How are we doing on the spreadsheet?
I'm sorry, is that a question for me? Yeah, the spreadsheet's developed. I think in light of the direction that you're giving, what I'd like to do is, is confer with Mr. Banksen just in terms of process. And, and we might, we might be able to turn that into a ballot of sorts as long as we're aware of Kansas Open Meetings, Open Records provision. So I, I think, I, I agree with you. I'm glad to hear you say that, you know, all the information go to all the commissioners and we can certainly facilitate that by way of table and get you the documentation. My, I think what we may need to talk about a little bit more is how to tally those votes, whether you just come to the meeting, we tally them on the spot, or whether it's appropriate or inappropriate to try to do that in advance.
Well, bear, bear with me. This may, this may not be a suggestion that you all can live with, but something that I've been thinking about is that, like Commissioner Franz and Commissioner Davis said, review the applications in their entirety. And then we take the top, because it's a, it's a nine member board, if I'm not mistaken. Nine member board with, isn't that correct, Mr. Binkston? With the, with, with the designated position for the law enforcement officer and the human relations position?
Yes, it is. Yes, Mayor, this is Greg Binkson, legal counsel. If you don't mind me taking a moment, I have pulled up that text and can quickly go through that exact language if, if you wish.
Sure, thank you.
First of all, the, the section that we're speaking of is thirty dash eighty three. It begins by making the point, the board shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the governing body and that it should consist of nine members. The subpoints that address the specific membership components. Number one is one current member of the Human Relations Commission nominated by the Human Relations Commission from among the members whose terms on the hu, whose term on the Human Relations Commission will remain in effect for the duration of the term of the board. Second is one current member of the police department with three years' experience as a member of the police department and the current rank of either police officer or police sergeant. And lastly, seven persons who have demonstrated interest or experience in police and or community relations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Binkson. That's, that's incredibly helpful. So my proposal would be that we take the applications in their entirety. We each come up with, and this is for the members of the, of the general public, seven names to correspond with the seven positions on the citizens review board and that we rank them. And I think what the, the, the ranking of the members of our selections would help do, would help us all do is instead of just getting a group of seven names or ten names or whatever it ends up being and not knowing, you know, like in your mind, you know, who is most important that we get on the commission, you know? I would see it working something like, you know, trying to ensure that we got somebody's top, a, a, a top two selection from each commissioner onto the board. And, 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 and take that approach. And even if we wanted to take it a step further, if we did rank our orders of preference and there was something specific that we wanted to note about, say, the top two or three choices, like this is why I feel so strongly that this person should be, would make a, would make a really good member of the citizens review board, we could take that into account. And I just think that we're going to probably need to get into some sort of ranked, ranked decision making. And then in terms of the current police officer, I don't know whether we have ten applications or one. So that may be a self eliminating problem. But, you know, I would propose that we handle this at least consistent with, consistently with the way that we handle our, our other board appointments. Because just in looking, our, our guidelines for the selection of this committee are pretty broad. And when I looked at them today, all it talks about is the racial and ethnic diversity of the city of Salina with over representation of minority populations in comparison with local demographics. But I think that if, you know, as we look amongst ourselves, we'd agree that there's a lot of diversity that we can represent. For example, we don't want, you know, seven all women. We don't want, you know, seven people that are over sixty five. We don't want seven people that are eighteen. We want to find a good mix of people who have different experiences and bring different experiences to, to the board. I think it's also really important that we somehow vet the folks. I know that there's obviously a background check that they, that they need to pass. But I think something, and I feel like it's my responsibility as the mayor, would be to reach out to these people to confirm that they have the time to devote to this. This is a startup board. They're going to need to have both quantity of time and flexibility of time in terms of getting this thing off the ground. But I almost think that there's going to need to be an, an, an additional contact with those people to ensure that they're really willing to give this the time that it deserves. And also to ensure that we're getting really objective people. We don't, I mean, and I, I'm assuming, I'm saying this at least for myself, you know, we don't want someone who's got a huge bias against the police. We also don't want someone who, you know, can't apply any critical thinking skills. We need to find that person who comes to this with an open mind. So I guess my proposal would be to receive ranked lists from all of you and then take it, take it from there and bring it back to you for your approval.
Commissioner Davis, I kind of like that. I might even, you know, rank them, the first person out of seven gets fourteen, the next one gets twelve, just to spread out the point total just a little bit.
Right.
But I like that idea.
I, you know, I, I, I'm on board with that too. I was a caveat, but you know, I, we cannot simply apply the ranking without thinking about it because it's entirely possible. without thinking about it, because it's entirely possible that, you know, people that we rank as most important will fit within a certain demographic or, or, or don't, as the case may be. We just need to make sure that that doesn't result in leaving someone who ought to be there out simply because, you know, they didn't, they, they didn't fall within any of our ranking systems. So I, I think we, we need to, you know, you know, that's helpful and can inform our decision, but I think we need to apply that with a bit of discretion.
Absolutely.
To judgment.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Davis, so you bring your top seven, but bring your next, next five.
Bring your top.
Bring, bring your next five on a second sheet of paper, right?
And, and, and rank them. And if there's a particular reason, i.e. if you, you know, if, if, if there's something that you can share about an applicant that makes them a compelling addition to that board, that's, I mean, I think that speaks a little bit to what Commissioner France, you know, is, is, is talking to. We can read through their applications. But sometimes if there's a personal experience, like I saw Jane Doe negotiate a very difficult situat, or mediate a very difficult situation and all parties came out of it and felt good about the process. I mean, we need, we just need a lot of different skill sets on that board. And so at any rate, that's why I was thinking rankings would help. Personal notes about, you know, why you feel so strongly, maybe about your top three choices. I'm not saying you have to write a 250-word essay, but, you know, if there's just something that you can share about why that choice makes sense to you, we, we need to take advantage of everybody's points of view and their points of contact in the community. I'm just kind of looking around. I mean, are we?
That sounds good. And, and if Commissioner Davis, it might be worthwhile to read those, you know, highly qualified candidates in our own minds, read those at the beginning of the selection process.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, well, we'll kind of just keep working down that, down that path and hopefully we can get the applications in some form or another. And I'll get with Mr. Skreg and we'll get, we'll get that figured out. Thank you for indulging me with that time. I really appreciate it, but I'd like to keep that moving forward if we can. I guess that brings us, unless, absent any other business, that'll bring us to our executive session for personnel.
I'll be more than happy to read that until we officially switch our seats. How, how many minutes for this session?
I'm going to look at Commissioner Hoppick. I was kind of thinking 20 minutes, but.
20 minutes. I think 20 minutes should work.
Okeydoke, 20 minutes.
Commissioner Davis, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the city of Salina YouTube channel at 5:52 PM.
Madam Mayor, can I confirm that that's all the commission members and city manager Skreg? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Make that 5:53 now.
We have a motion and a, and a second to recess it to executive session for 20 minutes, resuming on the Zoom link at 5:53 PM. Roll call, please. Sorry. Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges. Aye. Thank you. We'll be back there in 20 minutes. Okay. Do we have, do we have all the commissioners back and?
Mr. France and Mr. David.
Still muted.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
There you go.
Come back. All right. All right.
Okay.
I move the city commission recess again into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the city of Salina YouTube channel at 6:14. 6:14 PM. Thank you.
Is there a second? We have a motion. We have a motion and a second to re, to resume our executive session and resume in this Zoom room at 6:14 PM. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodg, or Hoppick?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye.
All right, we'll go back to the breakout room. Is everybody back and can hear?
You know, I could be wrong, but I think behind that mask Lauren likes having the power to mute all of us.
I don't know, this is a lot of cat herding. I told, Jacob, Jacob tried to say that, that this could be my new job and I was like, no.
But we've got, we've got a new person on the, on the Zoom controls. We've got the new, we've got the Assistant City Clerk and we've got the mayor that doesn't know, that isn't in a rhythm yet. So we've really got.
And we survived.
We did.
If we hadn't, if we hadn't have self-disclosed, I don't know if people would have noticed.
At any rate, I don't know that we have any action to take right now other than to communicate our thanks to City Manager Mike Skreg for his leadership and for shepherding us through what is probably going to be, go down as one of the most difficult years in history. And being a city manager during that time is, is, is a whole new challenge. So you rose to the occasion and really want to offer my heartfelt thanks. And I think on behalf of commission, of the commission, thank you for your leadership.
Most definitely.
If that translates into any action, but if we can come up with a resolution of appreciation for next week or the week after, I think that would be a very good thing to do.
But thank you. I appreciate it. Happy to serve and the whole team really stepped up.
And we don't say this often enough, not just to ourselves, but we owe your family a debt of gratitude for putting up with what I know are early mornings and late nights for you and calls on Saturday afternoons and all the other times that you're supposed to be off. So please, please extend our, our thanks to them.
I, I will do it. It's definitely a team effort at home too.
Well put.
All right. In the absence of any other business, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hoppick here, salute.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. I'll just go ahead and do a quick roll call since I'm here. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges? Aye. We are adjourned and we will see you all next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.